Let's meet and we'll come on, clerk, read your call.
Counselor Capone, Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor McGonigal.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Politano.
Here.
Counselor Sichetta.
Here.
Counselor Sani.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Present.
Counselor Marquez.
Ted President, quorum is present at this time. Stand up and salute the flag.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, I am the United States of America and whose republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, my question is that before we go, Counselor Fred Capone sent the communication indicating that he is unable to attend the meeting due to a prior family commitment. Clerk, read the first order.
First order of business is a public hearing to our parties in interest of petition for National Grid to install plus or minus 15 feet of PFC conduit from pole number 1094 Thorndike Street to MHA 312 Broadway at Thorndike Street in Everett, Massachusetts.
The petitioner here tonight for this.
Open a public hearing?
Motion made second to open to a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. At this time, I'll ask anyone sitting out there if they oppose in favor of this order. At this time, I'd like to ask anybody in favor of this order. Is anybody in favor of this order? Anybody in favor of this order? Seeing none, that part of the public hearing is over. Is anybody opposed to this order? Is anybody opposed to this order? Is anybody opposed to this order? Seeing none, public hearing is over. It's before you.
Ms.
Alderman, excuse me, Counselor Hanlon.
Make a motion that we refer to our next meeting and invite the folks from the National Grid to be present.
On the motion, I would also like to have the administration give us a count on how many double poles we have in the city of Everett.
Second.
Okay. No, wait, no, we're getting a little crazier. The motion that's before you here is to invite the -- who's the gentleman?
His name is Dan Cameron.
Yes, to invite Dan Cameron here before the next meeting and to also to have a list of all the poles that are double poles in the city of Everett.
Just the count.
The count.
Yes. Thank you. Fable action. Second.
That's motion.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let it be sent out to Mr. Cameron for next meeting. Clerk.
Item number two is public participation. To hold a 10-minute public participation period during this formal session.
Mr. President, I do have one sign-in. So I make a motion to open public participation.
Second.
Motion made second to open public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Kay Conway.
I'm just glad we'd like to sit down.
No, either way.
Either way, let's have you more comfortable.
69 Cleveland Ave., can you hear me? Well, my voice isn't good, but is it on? I have a voice issue. 69 Cleveland Ave. in Everett. And the reason I'm here is I started looking at the past few genders, agendas, and to see if I could get an idea where everything's so brand new of how to follow, what's taking place if you don't see a meeting or whatever. So anyway, I noticed on April 14th that unfinished business, there was number 19. It said something about section 7-6 and 7-7 and with transfers of funds, and it was erold as amendment and sent back for adatement. Well, when I looked at their chapter seven of the new charter and looked at those sections, all it says is reserved, which told me nothing. I have no clue what that means. And I don't know if it should give some kind of an explanation or not, but it doesn't. So then on April 28th, I looked at, there was again an unfinished business, and it spoke about, something about longevity. Well, I don't remember anybody discussing it on the floor, maybe a committee with something positive, so everybody just went along with it. I don't know, but it doesn't seem like that should really happen, you know, with three or four people vote on it. I think the rest of the people should be able to participate on the floor. So we at home know what's going on. You may know, but we don't always know. Okay, so then, when I saw this thing about longevity, and I looked under, I think it was finance and taxation or something, for the charter, and I couldn't find anything. So I went to the ordinances, and I did find something on longevity. It's like 310 pages, so I didn't have a lot of fun scrolling down, but I found it. And what it said was that it's 7-166. It explains what a longevity allowance is, okay? And it should be, it doesn't really say who's, who can get it, but it does say when they should get it after a certain amount of time, their anniversary dates. And so that confused me. I think there should be maybe more discussions and explanations of exactly what these are all talking about, because I'm not the only one that gets confused. One thing that -- oh, I tried to find the amended ordinance on this, and I couldn't find anything, no details about what was being changed, who's eligible, does it include elected officials? I mean, I have no idea about any of this, because it's just simply too vague. And I'm, those are really the only ones that I looked at, but I wouldn't be surprised if there's more like that, that the general public wouldn't understand at all, and I think we have that right. And I just hope that, I know I did find like a longevity allowance breakdown that was given to me, and it says like who is responsible, and even this is vague. It says all permanent full-time, non-union and administrative offices. Who's an administrative office? Are you gentlemen and ladies? I don't know. Who is it? Is it the Solicitor's Office and the Chief of Staff? I don't know. It really doesn't give an explanation. And.
Kay, our salary is dictated by the charter, so that would --
I'm not talking about your salary.
That would include us here, you know.
I'm not talking about your salary. This was longevity.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, but we're not administrators.
No, I'm just asking who is? I have no idea who is. Is it the mayor?
Okay, let's go. I'm sorry.
Okay, I guess that's it, but based on what I did see, I just found it all very, very difficult for the person out there watching to know what's going on, especially if it comes from a committee, there's no discussion, and it's passed or whatever is due with it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Some make a motion to close public participation.
Do we have time? Would you like exploration?
If I could, Ms. Conway, all the committee reports are online, so if you look at where the, what committee it was in, the committee report is there, and it gives a full detail from Mr. Burley on what the discussion was. The second, they're all there. The second thing is, it'll never be the charter that we're amending here. So you'd never look to the charter when you see 7-6 or whatever. Always look to the ordinances, unless it says that they're amending their rules, because we cannot amend the charter from, the city council cannot amend the charter from their seats. I mean, it's a long-drawn-out state specified process. So don't ever go to the charter. Always go to the ordinances when you see that. And lastly, we're working on some software right now that'll do exactly what you want, Kay, and that is to have all the supporting documentation online with every single piece of business. And that'll be available not only to the city council, but to the public. And that's something that they're working on in IT, and I think that you'll find that really helpful for you.
All right, anybody make a motion to close that part.
Make a motion to close public participation.
Second motion.
Motion made second to close public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Do we have a list?
Mr. Chairman, I come to find out that there is a person here from National Grid, so I would make a motion to reconsider item number one for a second.
Motion made to reconsider item number one.
Counselor Capone, Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
No.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Politano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
No.
Counselor Marquez.
Yes.
Two ayes, eight nays, Mr. President. I mean, I'm sorry, eight ayes, two nays.
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, I don't have the person's name, because it's not on the sign-in sheet, so if, please come forward.
Yeah, I'm Mary Ellen Murphy. I'm from National Grid. I've come to speak about the petition we have for Thorndike and Broadway. Shall I just go ahead? We want to, we have a transformer in the underground, which is very unreliable, and we'd like to take that out of the underground and put it in the overhead, and in order to do that, we're going to have to feed it from the underground, and we'd like to put in 15 feet of conduit and cable, cable and conduit, I'm sorry, from the manhole to that pole at Thorndike and Broadway. And there's been a lot of outages in that area, and this will make it easier to make any repairs if there are any, and this should really stop all the outages that have been happening there. And we'd like to, it's kind of important to us, because we'd like to do it before the summer heat waves. And if there's any questions, I guess I'm here to answer them.
Counselor Sani.
Thank you. When you change these transformers, are you notifying the residents down in that area, and are they going to be losing power at all?
As far as I know, no. That's right near a substation. They'll be switching, and nobody will lose power. They will be notified, all the abuddhas will be notified in the area, and we'll have a police detail there. We'll restore everything as we found it or better. It should take about two weeks, and if, we wouldn't leave anything open, we'd of course cover everything up.
Thank you.
Counselor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What area, this area, who are we serving with this pole? Who gets the service from there?
There's some housing down there, but it's mostly businesses. It's, Thorndike Street is in lower Broadway there.
Okay.
Going towards Boston near the Edison Plant.
Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question. What exactly is the PVC conduit? What is that? Was it the PVC conduit? Is that what it's called?
Conduit.
What is exactly?
That's what we feed our lines through to protect them, and then we put in fill of some sort, put it under cement so that it's safe and won't be moved or.
It's covered. It's not sticking out of the ground.
Oh, no, it's underground. It's about six feet underground.
Oh.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yeah, if we don't approve this tonight, that means this summer, a number of people are going to go without power, because this transformer can't handle the load. Is that what you're telling us?
There have been a number of problems down the years already, and this is a system improvement.
This is a larger transformer, carry more current, is that correct?
Well, this is a very old transformer. If it's in a manhole underground, it's very old, and it's met better days, and we will be putting in a bigger transformer, yes.
So the possibility would be, if we don't approve it, that people would go without power when they have it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Hanlon.
Do you have any other questions?
Anybody, if you want to ask any questions. Murphy, I think that what our biggest concern is, you know, the outage, if you get it done right away, would be better, and also, you know, we just spend a lot of money down there. Everything be restored, not asphalt, nothing, we want concrete sidewalks if you want to disturb anything.
Oh, yeah, we'll restore it like we always do with concrete sidewalks, and nothing should settle or move. It should be perfect.
Yes. Counselor Rosa. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have a problem with approving this, because I don't want anybody to lose power, but I do have a problem with National Grid, and I do have a problem with the double poles. And I also have an issue with lights being out, and when we make calls, they're not being fixed. So I feel like this is in front of us, you want us to jump on it right away, and we're going to do it, because we don't want people to lose power. But when we call, I feel that your services need to be a little bit better, and I really would recommend, I will have that on the agenda next time, that you bring back to National Grid whomever you have to speak to, and tell them to please take care of the double poles in the city of Everett, because I'm tired of looking at them.
We, I think you're familiar with Dan Cameron. He's trying to get a, some sort of program and process so that these double poles can be addressed. I realize how long they've been there. I really don't have a lot of answers for you, because I don't know that much about him, but he seems to be in charge of the program that we're trying to establish to take care of that.
Thank you. Fable action on the order?
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Motion made second. We'll call vote on the order.
Almond Delasola.
Yes.
Almond DeFlorio.
Yes.
Alderman, Counselor, Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Politano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Suspend rule 20 and 10, item number 12.
Item number 12, Committee on Community and Business Development Report, and ordered to grant petition auto repair mechanical license for Rena Bemunez, DBA ARD Auto Repair Incorporated, 88 East Elm Street, with recommendation for favorable action.
Fable action, Mr. Chairman.
The people out in the audience, if they have any questions, they're both here, but I, okay.
Motion made.
Second.
For the motion before you, and the vote on it. Motion is?
Fable action.
Motion made second for favorable action. Clerk, roll call.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Politano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
The lights, the number you know, you like down there.
Motion to suspend rule 20, take items number nine.
Second motion. Motion to suspend rule 20, take item number nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote for item number nine.
Item number nine is order sponsored by Counselor Michael Marquez, his president, petition for a permanent arning at 445 to 455 Broadway, recovering plot on existing arning.
All paperwork in order, Mr. Clerk.
All paperwork is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
What is the color?
What color is that arning? Mr. Chairman.
I look for now. Is it? No. Burgundy.
Okay, favorable action on the order.
I'm not, what happened to crimson tide red, Mr. Chairman?
That's as close as you're going to get.
Yeah, that's close enough.
Red is red.
Would you like to see a picture of it? Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the one in Everett Square at the drugstore, when we were members of the board of aldermen, that's the color we were looking for years ago.
Then I'm happy to hear that, and I like seeing an Everett businessman get the work. I mean that. Even though the address is Broadway, you know it better, the address is 445 Broadway, but it's actually 12 Chelsea Street, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the physical place is Chelsea, but the address is, the plot address is.
Fable action, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion made second for favorable action. Roll call vote.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Politano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
The orders have passed. Do a great job down there.
Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry. If we could suspend the rules and take items number 13, 14, 15, 18, 19, and 20 collectively.
Was it 13, 14, 15?
13, 14, 15, 18, 19, 20.
18, 19, and 20. Under the new charter, 2-9A, this is city council rules, which can be referred to the next meeting, and because this is new, maybe the clerk can explain it so the people, so the viewer, audience know what's going on, please.
Yeah, section 2-9A says that any piece of business cannot be, that can be passed finally, cannot be, cannot be done so, can't be passed finally on its first introduction to the city council. So what they're doing here is taking these matters, since chances are their rule changes and will pass, rather than vote on them this evening, which the charter prohibits, they will simply refer them to the next meeting, and that'll be the first, will be considered the second time it's been before them. So they can't vote on anything finally on its first introduction before the body.
Thank you.
The option is still there to refer it to committee or do whatever else you would like with it, other than that, but.
Mr. Chairman, are we all in agreement collectively? Read through these, if you need to put them elsewhere.
On the motion.
Counselor Hanlon.
I'm kind of confused with this now, because if what clerk says, are we actually enrolling these tonight?
No. No, since they're orders, they don't need to be enrolled. They only need to be passed once. So if you pass them this evening, it would be final, and they cannot be passed finally on their first reading before the city council.
Great, okay.
So referring them to the next meeting.
Now, you also, before we do, you also have the option to refer them to a committee.
You could do whatever you want.
If you find something that needs to be to a committee, you can do that also.
You can also do that in two weeks.
Yeah.
Right.
So the motion before you is to collectively take 13, 14, 15, 18, 19, 20 under rule 2-9A and.
Refer them to the next city council.
Refer them to the next city council meeting. Yep, it'll be a voice vote, but that's the thing before you. Clerk, read the.
No voice vote.
Oh, it's a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They have been referred to in two weeks.
Yeah, I know. Yes, yes.
Clerk, read.
Item number six?
Number six.
No, I'm sorry, I don't remember. Item number three. Item number three is an order sponsored by Counselor Michael Marquez, his president, chief procurement officer, here by grant of permission to accept and dispose of listed equipment from the police department that is no longer needed, outdated, and no longer in use once declared surplus by the honorable city council. The inventory will be sold by public auction.
Aye.
Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, before favorable action, will we be receiving a copy of all the inventory items?
Yes, we have a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, we do. And if I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Murphy, but if I may, if you notice, this is an order, and it's before you this evening, and however, you can vote on it this evening, that is because it's considered a routine piece of business. Declaring something, had it been like a major transfer or something like that, you could not have voted on it tonight. But if you notice, one of the rules that you've laid over till next week is that the president goes through and do the agenda and says, this is a routine matter, this is a routine matter, this is not. And this was, we consider.
The next three orders will be routine.
They're just declaring something surplus.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Hanlon.
Mr. Chairman, we have three items here that in a row, three, four, and five, and they're all orders, and all three of them have something to do with disposing of public property. Item three says listed equipment, and I know we're not on four, but I want to say it anyway, the reference inventory, and number five talking is about desks, chairs, drawers, and so on and so forth. How do we, how do we vote on something that says, vote on the listed equipment? We don't have a list of the listed equipment.
List is here. I mean, we do have a list.
True.
Like we have, sure, and item number three.
Maybe the list should be distributed, too.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
If I may.
Great. We know, let's get, I'm going to say, okay, feeling, you all set?
Will you?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you. That's what I'm asking. I mean, I think we should have a physical copy in front of us when we're doing this, and we don't have that, so I think that's pretty much what we're looking for.
If you lay it on the table, we can perhaps make a copy, because it's not a huge list. If we want to lay it on the table, we can.
I mean, motion to lay it on the table.
No, let's take three, four, and five, and lay it on the table. What's before us here?
Not only because it's mine, but item number four is the four desks and five desks and four chairs that used to be in the council chamber. That's all that is. But yeah, if you want to leave those on the table, we can get a list.
So we're going to get a list for what, three and five?
Yep.
So, so, Mr. President. Okay. Motion made second to lay this on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Clerk, read.
Item number four.
We're going to do four? Or is that going to be the same situation we have?
No, the other three and five, no. Item number four, that five desks and four chairs from the city clerk's office be declared, from the city clerk declared surplus. The inventory is no longer needed and outdated, no longer in use once declared surplus by the honorable city council. Inventory be sold by public auction.
Fable action.
Is the four chairs and five desks that used to be, that are not in the Bavarian room, but that are here.
Second motion, favorable action.
Motion made second. Clerk, read the, roll, please.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Politano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani. Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Yes, the order has passed.
Yeah, it's laid on the table. It's been, item number five's been laid on the table, item number three.
Ms. L?
Yeah.
Rosie, do that.
Item number six, in an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez, his president, petition for junk dealer's license for Palmetto Joe Incorporated for buying of scrap metal and secondhand articles at 366 Second Street. All paperwork is in order.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, favorable action, seconded. Roll call vote.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Polatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Marquez.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero, nine yeas, zero nays.
Clerk read item number seven.
Item number seven, petition for junk dealer's license for polarized aluminum DVA, Second Street, iron and metal, 285 Second Street. All paperwork is in order.
Favorable action, second motion.
Motion made, favorable action, and seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Polatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Marquez, nine yeas, zero, nine yeas, zero nays.
Clerk read item number eight.
Item number is junk dealer license for polarized aluminum DVA Schnitzer Steel at 69 Rover Street. All paperwork is in order.
Favorable action.
Motion made, favorable action, and seconded. Roll call vote.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Polatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Marquez, nine yeas, zero, nine yeas, zero nays.
Clerk read item number 10.
Item number 10 is petition for wentworth, petition for junk dealer's license for Wentworth Precious Metals at 431 Second Street and 0 Terminal Street. All paperwork is in order.
Favorable action, second.
Favorable action, and motion made, favorable action, seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Polatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Clerk read item number 11.
Item number 11 is petition for junk dealer's license for Napolitano Precious Metals LLC at 24 Dexter Street. All paperwork is in order.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made for favorable action, and seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Polatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Mister Chairman.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Mr. Chairman, items number 16 and 17 are duplicates, so no action on number 17, please.
Second.
No action necessary on item number 17.
State motion made, second. No action on number 17. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Item number 16 is resolution sponsored by Counsel John Liam McKinnon to invite Sean Collo, owner of Ferry Street, Inc., to the next government operations, public safety and service committee meeting to explain his idea for a 5K race within the city of Everett to benefit autism awareness.
Refer this to government operations, public safety.
Motion made, second to refer it to government operations. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's going to be referred to government operations. Clerk read number 18.
No, 18, we've already checked.
Item number 21.
Oh, 21.
I believe, right? The City Council made this request.
Oh, 29A, yep, 21.
Pursuant to Rule 17 of the City Council, all resolutions requesting repair, et cetera, the only item on here is, is there only one?
Three.
I'm sorry, three, is Peter Polatano repaired sidewalk in front of Norwood Street parking lot exit. From Peter Polatano, counsel for Polatano, no parking here, the corner sign, 103 Cottage Street, 35th and Corner, 20 feet from the corner. And Peter Polatano, counsel for Polatano, repaired a broken sidewalk between 169 Cottage Street and the corner Cottage Street in Ferry. All three items to refer to.
Refer to the respective departments.
Second.
All city services, I think. Motion made, second, refer all three to city services. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
We could take item number, I believe it's number three.
Three and five collectively, Mr. Chairman, second.
Motion made to take item three and five. Clerk, we all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk read item three, then number five.
Item number three, chief procurement officer here by granted permission to accept and dispose of listed equipment from the police department that is no longer needed, outdated, and no longer in use, once declared surplus by the Honorable City Council. Inventory will be sold by public auction. Number five is the following furniture from the Everett School Department be declared surplus, 85 teacher desk, 79 teacher desks, 80, I'm sorry, teacher chairs, 834 drawer file cabinets, 57 two drawer file cabinets, and eight lateral file cabinets. Reference inventory is no longer needed, is outdated, and not functioning properly, once declared surplus by the Honorable City Council, the inventory will be sold by public auction.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman. Second motion.
Motion made, second for favorable action. Roll call vote.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Polatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?